Alright.
Alright, well, welcome everyone. Good morning. Thanks for being here. We have a couple that want, you know, really one item on the agenda that we were going to go back through and look at the land use and development. Recommendations. And then that was the only thing we officially originally had on the agenda, right Shannon?
That's correct.
And then, and then wanted to add having a discussion of if you followed or saw the city council meeting the other night. First reading of the ordinance came up. That would remove residential from the commercial areas. It, the first reading did not pass. Four to three, and part of that was is we got some feedback leading up to that. That the idea, and I know we've discussed this a little bit in the committee, was that some of the property owners that have less than two acres, which is the requirement for a PD, provided feedback that they would at least like to have an option of a path to include residential in some of these smaller areas through the PD process if possible. So that's where we are and we left it at, we went ahead and voted, but we've asked Todd to move forward with the idea of taking that two acre requirement out of the commercial area. So the smaller plots would, would have a with guidance like, and again, some of the things that we've talked about in the past, you know, like, and that's what I want to have a discussion about is to go back to what that guidance would be. Would it be? You know, thirty-five feet or three stories that we put in some design guidelines for, that would make the units attractive to people other than students, i.e. small living spaces with four separate bedrooms with four separate bathrooms that don't open to common spaces, that they'd be, again, designed more appropriate with larger living gathering areas and, and bedroom, you know, a bathroom that opened to the public areas and, you know, maybe even some things like. I was thinking about the place right across from dockside, the condos there, I can't remember what they're called, next to the Hampton Inn. Like, for example, those are designed, what's that called?
Clemson Towers.
Clemson Towers, you know, there's even storage included, you know, a storage unit included with some of those that, you know, and from my understanding, I know previously, I don't know if it's still that way, but many of those are occupied by non-students, you know, so designed for non-students as well as students. So that was the second item that I wanted to, you know, have a discussion about. So if we, you know, make some sort of recommendation that, yeah, we're okay with this. And here's our, here's our suggestions with that. So let's start with the original Clemson next recommendations and some of the comments. And Shannon, can you, because, because of my goofy internet connection occasionally, I'm on my iPad on the meeting. Can you share your screen? Are you able to share yours?
I can do that. I can bring that up. That's why I'm no video this time.
Awesome. Yeah, you're, you're in the same situation.
Yep.
Again, my, my, my wonderful, that had been great until a couple of months ago, my wonderful, what's the name of the five or eve or whatever they call themselves now?
Alright, can everybody see this?
Yep.
Alright. So I think David went through last night and added some more comments and thoughts to this. Alright. So I guess we'll just go back through these and make sure everybody's okay with where we are.
And some of these, as we're talking, we can, you know, some of these are going to bleed into that discussion of requirements, like the first one require the creation of affordable and functional retail space and mixed use development. And look at opportunities for other things outside of retail type establishments, office and professional space. The, so this one as is, if we're okay with that, one of the ideas that has come up in the last couple of days as we're talking is requiring developers to put a set aside of maybe fifty dollars per square foot for non-residential space and the commercial space. So then that set aside in an escrow account would be available to businesses to help with the outfit of the space when they move in so that the developers have skin in the game. With those spaces and getting those spaces up and running because that's a big, that, that upfront cost is a big deal there. Fran has his hand up.
Yeah. So again, this is fine, except I don't really know what the word functional means in, in, in this statement. First of all, who evaluates that? But even just generally, what do we mean by functional in terms of that commercial space? Retail space functional in the sense people can walk around in it, functional in the sense it's a safety. But what does functional mean here? And, and as importantly, who, who enforce that if we can actually define it?
I think the intention of the word functional is that it's, it's someone's able to come in and use that, that space is built out or there's a way for it to be built out. But also, as David pointed out in his comments, that there's short-term parking nearby, that there's sheltered transit nearby. That all of those things combined to make a space functional.
But I don't disagree, but I think if we don't define it, it's, it's going to become meaningless.
Okay.
Because it's going to vary by location. So even in this case, you know, I don't know that we want every retail space to be near transit stop.
Yeah.
So I don't know the value of a word like that. That means lots of different things and it's probably somewhat site-specific. I, I just words like that in the past, honestly, have gotten us in trouble because it becomes so definitional. So I, I hate words that don't mean that there's not a consensus about what they mean that drive decision-making.
Could I make a proposal about this one? This is also one that the Business and Economic Development Group is digging into. They meet tomorrow and they are considering some of those more specific build-out requirements and how to make that work. What do you guys think about taking this off your list and letting them handle it?
Okay, I, I think that's a, that's a good idea. Here, here are some suggestions that if you can give them.
Okay.
These, one, instead of saying retail space, I think we say commercial space, i.e. retail, office, office, professional and other, you know, other appropriate commercial uses.
Okay.
Because we say retail, retail is just one dimension of, of that type of mixed use, commercial type use. And so I think instead of specifying retail, that we say commercial and then give some examples, you know, kind of thing there. The other, I, I like what Fran's saying about the affordable and functional. I think what we say may be a better word, and I know Fran, this is one that is not like well-defined, but viable. And then when we say viable, our meaning of viable is that there is a real chance and opportunity for this space to be attractive and filled by new businesses, offices, appropriate uses.
So, so Bob, I agree, but I guess to me, and this, this is going to be more stringent, but I think if we're going to do that, then we should include a statement that the builder has to provide evidence of that viability before we approve it.
Right.
It's a high standard, right? But again, if that word's going to really mean something, somebody has to decide when we've reached that bar.
Yeah. And I think that's what we could pass off to the, the Business and Economic Development Group is like, what do we mean by viable? Does that mean that, you know, a, a certain percentage of it is, or, or certain percentage of it has signed leases and is, is within three months of occupancy, you know, of being occupied by a viable business, that after a certain amount of time, that there's some you know, maybe fine or consequence for not having, you know, after twenty-four months, if you don't have within ten or fifteen percent of the like overall occupancy rate and commercial for the city leased, that you have some fine of, you know, let's say fifty cents or a dollar per square foot of a un- unleased, unoccupied space kind of thing. So I think we can leave that up, but Shannon, if you could convey that, leave that up to the other group, but convey that idea of a good definition of viability that makes it so that the commercial component has some carrots and sticks to get it filled.
I can do that.
But, but Bob, again, I'm not going to spend this much time on everyone, but I, I would like them also then to talk about how is that documented? What's the evidence of that? And who has to provide that evidence? So if they say, let, let's take your example, the leasing. So maybe the requirement is that before you can build it, you have to have commitment for thirty percent of the leases. I don't know what. But I would, I would ask that group tomorrow, not just to define viability, but specifically who and how will that be documented before we approve the, the, the building?
Right. So I, I, I think, I think, you know, there's a variety of ways. Yeah, that's absolutely what I want them to think about, you know, and whether it's on the front end before approval, or we make it a condition of the occupancy, like if they had residential, for example, that they knew that they could get the building open and going, but we said, you know, if we say twenty-five or fifty percent of your, of your commercial space has to be occupied, then we make that or occupied within three months of, of opening. We, we say, you know, your occupancy certificate is dependent on meeting whatever thresholds we put out there.
So they are already working with, they are already working with staff and with Mary on what are the, how they can make that happen within the, the legal limits of what, what we require. So that, that's on their radar of putting that in there.
Yep. Okay. Is that okay Fran? And then we'll see, we'll see back as implementation committee, we'll see back from them what those recommendations are and we can send them back and say, we need more definition or not.
Yep. I, I like that. I think it's important in all of our thinking, we keep coming back to identifiable, measurable ways to make sure these standards are being met, no matter what it is, that we know it, we see it. Yeah. Thanks Bob.
Okay.
So the next one is also one that the Housing Committee kind of looked at. I think you guys can leave this one pretty general. It's just to make sure that we incorporate affordable and workforce housing into catalyst areas. I don't know if you want to include using plan development agreements and public funding where needed. But I think this can stay general, just as a concept then, that you consider as you're moving through these workshop processes for these, for the different areas, catalyst areas.
Yeah. And maybe instead of using plan development agreements, because that's, that's just one tool. It's like using all available appropriate, you know, policy, you know, policies, appropriate policies and public funding where needed. Policy tools or something like that. Any other thoughts there? Nonprofit as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Okay. Um, I think, you know, the, the PD is what gives us teeth. So I think we probably need to leave that in there.
Okay. I mean, do we want, we could use that as, as like the four examples.
Something like that?
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's real important to leave that there.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody.
Everybody okay with that?
Big's appropriate.
One other question. So we, we really don't just want affordable housing though in the catalyst areas, right? We want affordable housing in, in other places in, in the city also. Does this limit, does this say that, or is this going to limit it just to catalyst areas if we write it this way?
So the Housing Committee is working on the citywide, implementing that citywide, since you guys are really just focused on the overlays and catalyst areas.
Okay.
This is your little piece, I think, to say, we agree with, this also has to be in these areas that we're going to be working on.
Okay. So this is a necessary in here, but, but certainly not limited to here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And Ken, did you have something you wanted to share?
Good, good morning. I, um, good morning. I'm sort of following the conversation. I'm having construction on my roof this morning, so I'm pretty noisy where I am. But I'm enjoying the conversation and I really liked the piece about keeping in the, the, the plan development as well as the comments about affordable workforce housing being not necessarily limited to just the catalyst areas, but throughout the, the city.
Yeah. And that's, you said Shannon, that's coming from the other group as well.
Right. So those are, if you look at what the Housing Committee sent, and I can send that to all of you guys too, their recommendations that they sent to the Implementation Committee last week, that the Planning Commission is going to receive on Monday, that's in there.
Yeah.
Alright. So we've got one. So moving down to facilitating student and non-student housing. Cultivate, and remember, we're keeping these general, we're not going into specifics. We're going to go into specifics later after city council adopts these. So cultivate appropriately scaled, purpose-built student housing development in specific catalyst areas that includes functional mixed uses and has access to public transit and is walkable and bikeable to campus and other needs of daily living. So this is a little bit different. It's saying, I think David came in and edited this. Basically that yes, we do want student housing in specific areas. That's accessible to public transit, transit is close to campus, so it can be walkable and bikeable and also can include functional mixed uses. So this one I could see being important as you move forward with defining what is in through the, the workshop process, what is in specific catalyst areas.
Here for some, the word functional, you know, again, thinking about it, is, is that, I think it's, it's functioning, like the mixed uses are actually functioning. They, they are, they are there, they are operational, they are there. It's not empty, it's not empty vacant space that isn't likely to ever be filled. Thinking about functional or functioning from that perspective makes sense.
And maybe you don't include that in here.
Yeah.
Maybe you have, maybe we, I'm just a suggestion, I'd like to hear what y'all think, but maybe you do have areas where you just want student housing and you're not, you don't feel like it would require a, a mixed use with it.
Yeah. Even though most of our, well, most of the catalyst areas have some, have some mixed use. It doesn't necessarily have to be commercial because there's a mix of types of housing, potentially open green space that could be seen as institutional. Anyone else have thoughts there? Again, this is, the other group is looking at these in a detailed manner, the, the non-student, the non-student housing is looking at this. We have, we are largely responsible for the idea of student housing.
Yeah, I guess I have a question of just maybe who, who are these non-students? And, you know, would any of us want to live in these areas with all, with all these students? Probably not, but who, who are they and how realistic is that, I guess?
So the Housing Committee is looking at workforce and affordable housing. So housing for everyone that supports everything going on in the city. That's not a student. But also grad, they've also specifically been talking about graduate student housing. So they are looking at different types of student housing. I think the way this particular recommendation has evolved. I guess what it's saying right now is, yes, we do, we would want to cultivate purpose-built student housing in specific catalyst areas without naming those catalyst areas. So I guess it's giving you a way forward through the workshop program to say for certain catalyst areas, this is where we'd like to encourage student housing.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the catalyst areas are more about, this is where we want to push student housing and everything else needs to be thought of at, from a broader market perspective. Where it makes sense. And from the consultants, again, we got to keep in mind that the university isn't the only player in the game and that we are going to have growth in this area for a variety of other reasons as well, that, that are not connected to the university. So some things that Business and Economic Development, if we look at trying to create a, a situation where we're expanding our economic footprint with office professional, you know, you might have, you know, you know, small firms, single people that move into town and, and need a place to live that's different than what I'm looking for, you are looking for, anyone else's is looking for there. So I think that's the, the idea that there are potential other, there's going to be a growing market for different types of housing, a different housing mix than we currently have for regular people.
Yeah, for sure. That makes sense. I mean, I could see the definitely a need for that. Looking towards the future and then just international students that have to walk, that come with no car, huge, huge need there.
Yep, absolutely. I think Fran, then Ken, then Lynn have their hands up.
Yeah. Just, just curiosity, what, what the heck does the last five words that mean? Other needs of daily living, like bars, outdoor plumbing, what, what are we saying here? Grocery stores?
I think the general intention is that they can walk and bike to complete, like to go to the grocery store to complete their daily errands, that purpose-built student housing is in a catalyst area that is easily accessible by walking and biking to everything those students would have to do.
So so that would mean off-site things that we wouldn't build catalyst areas unless they were in a certain perimeter distance to grocery stores and those kinds of things. I don't know if we want to do that.
Maybe we wouldn't encourage student housing in those catalyst areas unless they were walk, walkable and bikeable to, to a certain number of amenities.
Yeah. See, I can almost, well, I don't agree with that because I think student housing might end up being on more fringe areas that are not as accessible as places downtown. I, I don't, I guess I don't see the purpose and that's another thing I would have enforcement issues about that, but.
Oh, I'm going to add a comment here that this is one we probably need to go back, look at with every, everybody needs to review and maybe we need to come back and take some sort of a a vote on and see where everybody stands, unless you want to do that now, because I see that as a either we.
It, it's, it's a nice idea. I don't know if I would, I would put it in there though, but I, I'm not going to push that. I just, I, I just find that interesting that we're going to try to do that and I don't know how.
Yeah, I, I also like that idea a lot, you know, from, you know, when we talk about urban design and not meeting urban from like we're a big city, but urban design that's, that's geared towards people and making it as easy as possible to have access to the things that you need without individuals being in single cars doing those, those things. It's, it's definitely related to our transportation and traffic issues. So whoever lit, I think someone lowered their hand, but Ken?
Okay. Thanks. Well, I think related to that last comment about the daily living and bikeable and transit, as Bob said, I think that probably comes out of our conversation earlier about these transportation nodes and folks being able to have other options besides driving cars. So walking, biking and, you know, buses to encourage and to promote transit, public transit as opposed to everyone driving their cars. The other point referring to Peter's earlier question about what is affordable non-student housing, and it was pointed out, I recall having planning students in my graduate students in my classes and them saying that housing is not affordable. The type of housing that they're looking for in Clemson isn't affordable. They aren't necessarily looking single, not necessarily looking for living in a subdivision, established neighborhoods. But at the same times, they aren't interested in sharing with three or four other students, you know, the types of undergraduate student housing primarily. So they're saying, we can't find a place here. I'm a professional. I worked, some of them in that case worked with the city and Todd and others on the planning staff. And they're like, oh, we don't have any place here for, to live. And so that's the idea and being able to mix that into the broader city and community, I think that housing would be a benefit and attraction to Clemson.
Okay.
Alright, other comments on this one?
Um, I have one. I assume we have a definition of appropriate scale purpose-built housing?
I think we're going to have to work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Think that's something we're definitely going to need to, that, and that I think the uptown redevelopment workshop will help us get to that in a systematic way where we, where we get broader community input as well.
Okay. Cause I, I'm kind of with Fran, you know, there are a lot of things in each of these that kind of start with a phrase, but if we don't have a definition, or maybe that is something we hammer out with the public, you know, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think, and, and for everybody, we're not calling it a charrette anymore. We're calling it a redevelopment workshop. Okay. It's going to be like, I can't remember what we, when we started calling it a ban on, you know, something, it's not a ban. It's, it's a redevelopment workshop, which is, you know, again, you know, shret's a, a process, but a redevelopment workshop, we think is a better description of what we're actually doing to create that framework. It's not just going to be a design charrette where we're throwing, you know, potential uses down on paper. So, alright. What's next here?
Okay. So establish purpose-built student housing as its own zoning use category in the zoning ordinance. This is basically, again, the first step, city council adopts this and then we're in the background, you're working on what is that definition? Right?
Yeah. So this would provide, this would provide guidance in any catalyst areas where we say, you know, these are okay for student-focused development. And that we, that then these purpose-built student housing regulations would apply to those areas. Right?
Right.
Are y'all comfortable with that interpretation of how this would work and what this would look like? But obviously a lot, a lot of additional work and thought is going to go into this recommendation. Dr. McGuire?
Again, just terminology. So why zoning use as opposed to just zoning?
Well, I think you got to go zoning use category as a.
Know what they are? They're not zoning categories?
Uh, yeah. I mean, I think zoning categories could be, you know, I think that's fine. I don't know why use is important. Did David put any?
David added the use. I will check with staff to figure out what wording we need to use.
Okay.
To make sure it's consistent with everything that's how the city does everything. So I will come back with that. Uh, the next one is in priority catalyst areas, use the PD process and homeowners associations to target new housing options to non-students where desired. Maybe that is in designated catalyst areas.
And here again, I like the plan development process, but also we could, we could include an other appropriate other appropriate policy and zoning tools. Tools.
Policy. That kind of matches what you said above.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Any other feedback there?
Uh, just again, yeah, I I'm not sure homeowners association, just because. Typically homeowners associations don't exist until the the plant, I'm sorry, until the building has started. In many cases, people live there. So.
And we have zero control over that as a city, right?
Yes, I'm not sure why we're including that phrase because that would come like after the party, you're asking people about it. Particularly if we wanted to have some impact on what's actually built and how it's built. So, and we've never used homeowners, so maybe that's a good device, but I'm just not aware of how it would. How it will be implemented prior to building.
Right.
Okay, yeah. We will take that part out. Besides that, are you guys okay with that one?
Yep. Anyone else?
Okay.
Wow, um, I.
Can can I ask something?
I was gonna, maybe there the neighborhood planning, you know, as part of the earlier discussions, we were talking about. Uh, neighborhood plans, so maybe the neighborhood planning. You know, processes could replace this homeowners association, but the idea is. Uh intervening and working with the local neighborhoods. And their plan.
That's a good idea because that's in a, that's in another group's recommendation. So we're tying. Tying this recommendation to that recommendation and the uh non-student. Housing and neighborhood, neighborhood preservation and planning.
Yes.
Uh, group there.
All right, I will take a look at that and make sure we use the same wording that they use so that they are tied closely together.
Did Jackie have a comment?
Um, you 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 already um covered what I was about to say, um, dealing with homeowners association. Because if you're talking about catalyst areas. Um, they would be pre-existing, some pre-existing homes, at least in the neighborhood or surrounding areas. That would want an input. So I agree with what you just said, uh, Ken.
Thanks.
Yeah, great input there.
All right.
All right, moving, moving into the next ones.
Um, so we covered this one above, it's in there twice. You guys can decide if you want this in there twice or if you, where you want it. Um, it's make purpose-built high-density student housing a separate use within the zoning ordinance. It's in here twice because it was in the white paper twice. Um, the consultants felt pretty strongly about that. They put this in two separate areas.
Yeah, I think if you just reference and and tie those two together.
Okay.
With consistent language that that works.
Do you think it needs to be in here? Twice, or is it covered if it's just in in here? So if it's the same, the same recommendation.
Uh, you know, from a, from a technical perspective, just making sure that it doesn't get lost. Being obviously important. I don't mind it being in there twice. Jackie?
Have we ever um defined purpose-built? Did we ever make that distinction?
We haven't yet. We started looking at it, but we haven't gotten there. So that's work to continue to be done. Again, this is just about. Passing on a recommendation to council that, yes, we are, we are moving forward with these. Keep going, you know, this is kind of a. Intermediate approval step.
Okay, so. The next one. Bob, you want to take the lead on this one?
Yes, this is where consider removing high-density multifamily even as mixed use by right from uh non-residential districts. Um, could be allowable in a planned development or catalyst overlay district. Um, you know, and I think that's where we are still heading. We're just. You know, the the issue has become, we've, we've created a two-class system of under two acres, not allowed at all. There's no path. And over two acres, there's currently a path. So cleaning that up and making it so everyone has a. You know, some path for, again, the guidelines and guidance of the scale and. Uh, design and all those kind of things are what, you know, the other thing that we want to talk about this morning. But I still think this. Applies. And we're already moving on it as as we are considering the ordinance now. So, um. Yeah, obviously, obviously council has already, you know, gone down this path.
I guess that's my question. Do you want to remove that from this set of recommendations since council is already looking at this separately?
I I think we leave it there as this is why council is is. Yeah, we, because we made the recommendation already that we leave it because this is why council is there instead of taking it out. You know, this is part of our, it's tied to our strategic and comp plan, the the decision to to do this.
Do you want to add anything to this or have the committee add anything to this that would say? It could be allowable in a planned development or catalyst overlay districts. And. Parcels less than two acres or something like.
Including parcels less than two acres.
Just to stay consistent with where everyone is.
Yeah. Some of the feedback that I've heard in the last day since the uh, since the council meeting was, people were a little afraid that 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 meant. That they've misinterpreted totally that the the four-acre minimum in residential areas was going away, but that's not the case at all. But this clearly says non-residential districts.
We'll just reiterate that.
Yeah. Yeah. Any, any other feedback there? Fran, before you even raise your hand?
No, I'm fine, Bob.
All right. Moving on.
Hey Bob, this is Larry. I just, I'm, I'm looking through our, our zoning materials. I don't see any anywhere where we define high density. I don't see where we define that and that's making me uncomfortable. We're putting this high-density multifamily in several places, but.
So we can, we're considering moving, actually, you're right. We're considering, what we're doing is we're considering moving residential. Use from our mixed, from our, as a conditional use. Not high density specifically.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that was. Making me uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fran, you're back.
Well, just just in terms of what Larry, I I think in the moratorium, we sort of ended up high density being two hundred beds. Remember that was sort of the cutoff for building? I think it was two hundred.
Yeah, but that was, that Fran, that was for the moratorium.
I know, I'm just saying, that was what we used for that. I'm not saying.
Right, but I I'm looking in our, in our documentation, I'm, I'm into the zoning, you know. Materials right now and I. Can't find any. You know, it's not defined it under our glossary terms and I've been looking through the uh. Plan development and the commercial both, uh, and can't find anything, so.
Just, all right. All right. Next one?
Our next one, I think everybody seems to agree on, as is it's CRE overlay districts for the following catalyst areas. West downtown, east downtown, Clemson Triangle and Clemson Crossing. And others as identified and deemed appropriate. Um, we can look at adding, you know. Adding what you want those, or we can just leave that general.
I kind of like that one general, since we, you know, we're gonna make decisions, you know, as Fran likes to say. We um, we own the plan, the plan doesn't own us. So, you know, some things that are, that are different may, you know, occur. Over what the initial, you know. Thought is with the plan.
Okay. Everybody still okay with moving forward with that one? Okay, um, the next one, we're already moving forward with, it's in the uptown district. Establish a systematic process for regulating and planning for future development. Is there anything you guys want to add to that?
Think Andy, how did we in the specs, we called it a um. Development framework. I think. Development framework, framework and process for regulating.
All right, I will compare that to the RFP and. Make sure they're the same. All right, are we okay with that one, everybody?
Anything else?
All right.
All right.
For the far north, near north and Paclit, Milliken. I guess catalyst areas. Largely continue using current tools to their fullest. Everybody good with that?
I don't know if there's much more that we.
All right.
Can be there.
Um, we had talked about tabling this next one, um, because a lot of the other groups have tabled their recommendations for hires until later. I don't know how you guys, if you still feel about. Waiting off on sending recommendations to hires, for hires to council.
Fran?
So I think on both of these, and maybe Andy can chime in and Bob, I know you too, what I would suggest is that. As we develop the Clemson X, all the plans that we consider hiring. And staffing needs sort of in a more comprehensive way as opposed to individually. Um, I, I understand number two, for instance, but that may not be the best approach. And I think that we need to consult with Andy and. The the directors and have a more com- comprehensive hiring plan because some of these positions may overlap, some of them may really be unique. Some may require some other supports. I don't, I think that's what we talked about tabling it, not that it wasn't a good idea as much as. As other hiring needs come up, there might be some. Reason to look at them in a more comprehensive way as opposed to individual job positions. And I think that's what the other groups might be doing too. I'm not sure.
That's the direction they are headed.
Yeah, and and also, but I think we leave a recommendation in that we. Recommend that council adopt because, as you know, in consultation with Andy. Hiring isn't like. An instant, automatic, easy. Thing to do. We've got to do that as, you know, we ought to be doing that as part of our annual budget process. Um, and those kind of things. So. I don't think we can let this one get to the back burner because, you know, if you don't do it, it's one of those things that. You know, you you might get further and further behind in that process. Andy?
I was just thinking that one possibility would be to start with some kind of a real estate consultant. And start off working with them where they would represent us in those types of situations and then we could use our experience working with them to find out exactly. What a full-time position would look like. Like if we can transition from the consultant level to staff.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. But again, I I like, I I do think that, you know, and the other groups as well, we should be looking at those recommendations. And as the plan unfolds, we need to be continuing to consider. Making recommendations about future staffing needs based on. How the plan and implementation unfolds. And that can take a variety of forms, whether it's. Suggesting a full-time person, suggesting, you know, hiring people on contracts um to look at certain areas. Again, because personnel processes take. Take some time. And. We, uh, at time and planning, so I don't want this to like go away.
Do you want me to put this on? On the agenda for the implementation committee? To look at this. Recommendations across all the committees and. We can pull all those into one place and look at them there.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
I like Andy's idea, though, if we are going to do something from land use and development, it's like, consider. Um, you know, working with a real estate consultant as as needed and necessary to represent the the. Cities, you know. Uh, position in the redevelopment process. Which could, you know, however you want to do it, Shannon, but like, it's also kind of related to where you started with three, with number three as well.
Right.
Everybody okay with that?
Okay. These last two housing are, um, housing also. Uh, sent forward to planning commission, so we could. Feasibly take these off unless um. You feel strongly about. Any changes in here. Um, so the first.
Did we already do those as an implementation committee?
We already looked at, we've already looked at both of these as an implementation committee through the housing group.
Yeah, and we, I I think we could take those off at this, this plate at that point, if there are, if they're already moved forward through something else.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that before I make a unilateral decision, which I'm not intending to do? Any objections, thoughts?
Okay, I will finalize these and send them out to everybody to review one more time. Um, and then if we're good with these uh through email, uh, we can take them to the implementation committee next week or the week after. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're going to, I mean, if y'all want to meet the the implementation committee people on here, if y'all want to meet next week, that's, that's fine. It's, I think next week's another week. That I would not be here. But we make that determination as we, as we go for the eight to eight-thirty meeting. Um, all right, so uh here in the last few minutes, because again, it's a number of us have to be, have to go, J C, yeah, I've got you, Fran. But a number of us have to go J C U A B here in a little bit. Um, so Fran?
Just one other quick thought that we don't have listed, and I think somehow we might, might need to do something about it. Um. One of the issues we could keep coming up with are. Differences or things in the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan. That either we're not doing or they don't fit well with what Clemson X is recommending, or they don't fit with our zoning or. So I wa- I wonder if we valuable, if we have for one of our recommendations, something related to the comprehensive plan. And making sure that's synced with Clemson X and zoning. And it just seems we're going in different directions sometimes without. Looking back into the comprehensive plan and seeing what. We need to do with those. Some of the things we just suggested, and I don't know this, Bob, may actually conflict with things in the comprehensive plan, or at least not be complimentary with it. And I don't know if that needs to be a recommendation or we, and Todd's been doing this, I know, but. We we just stumbled several times over, but what is the comp plan saying? Does the comp plan allow that or you see what I'm saying?
Andy, do you have anything to say about that?
I wish I was paying closer attention instead of writing a memo about cat bus so y'all can respond to the. Social media stuff.
Yeah, uh, so, so the idea of the comp plan and the strategic plan integration is what Fran was asking about, and I know that we. Uh, there's already been a recommendation that's gone forward. I think you were looking at the possibility of. Again, pulling together the comp plan. And the strategic plan to make sure that there's alignment and then present them in a, in a better, you know, come up with a presentation format. That gives a couple of ways for people to integrate with our comp plan with, you know, the. I said ultimately, an eleven by seventeen, you know, um. Picture of the comp plan that people could comprehend would be nice, you know, or a couple page version. Uh, a twenty or thirty page version, and then you can have the six hundred pages of detail behind it, you know, kind of thing. You know, kind of thing, that work on those two other ways to, to present it. As well as ensuring that there's alignment between the two.
Yep, we're get, we're halfway through getting the comp plan cleaned up right now. They sent us our first invoice, so they're making progress, and then when that's done, we'll have that document ready. As the six hundred page backup you were talking about, and then when we get all of this Clemson next step straightened out. We can create that, uh, we can, that. That piece that synthesizes the two and presents it in a way that's easily digestible. And that we can have done in several formats, so we can share it in print, in, uh, computer media. Make it actually send audible.
Yeah, so that work is already on the way, Fran, you got your hand up?
But, yeah, but I guess I'm thinking now that, I'm sure, um, I guess the comp plan says nothing about catalyst areas. Nothing about the new zoning category, nothing about student-built housing, none of those terms, concepts are anywhere in the comp plan. So we're, we're kind of outrunning the comp plan in some ways, and at some point, and I think sooner rather than twenty fourteen or twenty twenty-four. The comp plan probably needs to be supportive, descriptive, complimentary. As opposed to just silent on some major things we're suggesting that you would expect to be part of a comp plan. So yeah, not only sync them, but also up, update the comp plan to reflect exactly what we're saying now. So when someone looks at the comp plan, they can't, like a developer looks at the comp plan and says, well, that's nowhere in your comp plan, why, why are you, why are you doing this? Special zoning for student, anyway, so I think, I think sooner we start that, the better.
What, what about this Fran, as a, as a suggestion, so the, the work is on the way, you know, the cleanup of the comp plan, then the integration of the comp plan. And the strategic plan, but we could make a recommendation that says Clemson next, you know, as adopted. As they are adopted and put forward to city council, Clemson next strategic plan for development recommendations. Supersede, you know, um, any, you know, comp plan recommendations. And that we are working on, um, getting those integrated in the comp plan, but as they are adopted by council. Those become the guiding force over, if there is any contradiction with the comp plan, that those become the guiding, guiding principle.
Yeah, or, or maybe, yes, I like that Bob, or even immediately incorporate him into the comp plan as an additional section, you know. Part seventeen or whatever it is, but Todd knows this too, but, but yeah, anyway, somewhere that gives it institutional authority through the comp plan.
Okay, Andy?
I was just gonna say that the timing's good here, because Todd can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're only a year or so out. How to do the ten-year comp plan update.
Yeah.
So, the, just the natural cycle of things, we might have everything in place by then to where we could really do the big ten-year. Change to the document.
Yeah, so, so maybe let's do this, if we can get, you know, maybe Todd and Andy and Shannon. And I together to like maybe craft a, a statement that does what we were just talking about Fran. Is that workable for everybody?
Sounds good.
Any objections to that? Okay, so let's, Shannon, if you can facilitate that, where we could, you know, even by email or a quick Zoom call, we can, we can come up with the, the right language. With, uh, with Andy and Todd weighing in on what that is, that gets us from now until when we get this new version. Digestible version of a comp plan that gives us a, uh, that, that, that hopefully gives us guidance. And again, like Andy said, we're, we're in a really good position for our next comp plan, um, redo, so. Alright, so I think that's a good way to approach that.
I will do that.
Alright, um, so now we're down to about two minutes to discuss what we would want to see in, um, as, as design. And guidance for a, uh, for, um. P Ds. In general, not just two acres or less, but all P Ds that would come forward, um, until we get. You know, catalyst area overlays, um. In place as part of the process that we're going through now. Um, I know things that we, things that have come up and things that we've talked about before are, um, you know. Uh, uh, height limitation of like thirty-five feet or a maximum of three stories. Uh, some of the design guidelines like, uh, you know, that would make them more appropriate for. People other than, than solely marketed to students, um. What are some of the other things that we, we've talked about, the, the regulations that would. Uh, push developers to create viable commercial spaces that are attractive to, uh, new businesses. Other things that you all can think of, or that would be important, uh, design standards, you know, do we want to require? You know. Brick facades or a character, um. You know, some character requirements, or the things that you all thought about, that you'd like to, like to see considered for incorporation. Into that, those, that guidance for P Ds. I have. Go ahead.
Gosh, there we go, um, I was in Greer yesterday, and they have, uh, completely redone their downtown. And it's, it's really nice in terms of paving and lighting and parking. And, and particularly being pedestrian-friendly and ADA compliant. And I think, I know another member of this committee is, has been looking at other, uh, guidelines that other towns and cities have done. And I think that's really a great place to start, you know, look at a town that has been successful. And let's look at their guidelines, um, for, for new development and, and, and those sorts of things. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here, but we can.
Right.
Examine these other guidelines that are out there.
Okay.
To ask, one of the things, like the Business and Economic Group is looking at having a speaker come up from Mount Pleasant where they have a business incubator. Would you guys be interested in? Um, rearranging some sort of speaker or a tour or somewhere, something to help kick this off and get this started? And if so, any recommendations on, if you guys have any recommendations or thoughts on who or where you'd like to start with that?
I like Christine, I'm, I'm a big fan of what Greer has pulled off over the last, you know, ten to fifteen years. Um, now, you know, total different community, but, um, they've gotten a lot of things right, um, I think in their. Um, development patterns and, and how they have used, you know, some different tools, um, along the way.
A few years ago, there was a guy who came to Clemson, an older man, and I can't recall his name, but he talked about development. Um, and we can either have a choice in it or have no choice, and I can't recall the guy's name, but maybe Todd remembers or Andy.
Talking about Mr. Skelton?
No, that, I don't think that's right.
When did this occur, Christine?
Um, it was a couple of years ago, and he came in, I think through ten at the top as a speaker.
Oh, Dean Heibel?
No, not Dean's the director, but no, this was a guest speaker, I can email Dean and find out.
I'm sorry, I can't help you.
Yeah, I had a memory, my life would be much better, I'll, I'll email Dean and find out, and he was a great speaker.
Yeah. Um, I, I like, I like that idea, you know, again, if we can, can look around, um, for some, for some models. Like Elaine has done, you know, with the, uh, purpose-built student housing, and, uh, yeah, if we could, if we could find, you know, a person. Or, or maybe even two, that would be willing to kind of talk us through some of the things, maybe with some, some. Uh. Model communities, um, where we, where you've seen things that you, that you like, that could be, um, extremely helpful. To, to look at, to talk to them and look at what their, you know, their policy, um, toolbox. Uh, that they use to get there was, Andy?
I was just gonna say that there's a city manager here in the upstate who's, I think is particularly talented. At redeveloping downtowns, her name's Diana Grisley, and she is now in Simpsonville. She just recently took that job, but she has a long track record of doing this very well. She did Traveler's Rest, and before that, there's a little town just north of Greer on the way to. Uh, North Carolina, I can't think of the name of it right now, but it's got an extremely charming main street.
Landrum?
Uh, yes, I believe that might be it, she did that one right before T R, but she would probably be a, a good brain to pick.
Yeah, and, and the other person, if we, if we do look at Greer, you know, Ed Driggers, the, the longtime city administrator. Who is, you know, kind of a legend, um, in the, in the world, and one of the best, best around, um, that's, you know, in the state. Uh, who just retired, he might be willing to come talk to us as, as, as well, um, since he, you know, there's a new, new person. Who's, who's good, but, uh, Ed's the one that really laid all that groundwork and did all of that, all of that stuff. Um, Brad?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a quick comment, that some of the, uh, strategies in the transportation element came from Greer. I've been doing a lot of track data collection over the last couple of years, and some as recent as last week, and, uh, that's some of the things that they were doing. It's not, I want to see in Clemson, so that's why I put it in there, I think that's a great start point, you know, Greer's a, they've done an incredible job with their downtown, so. Just want to make that comment.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good place, and like I said, it could be a good opportunity again with, um, with, I don't know what Ed's doing, I think Ed just fully retired. Um, and, and didn't move on to something else, but, uh, he's, he's great and would, might be someone to, to think about in that world as well, so. Um. Anything else, uh, what, what are y'alls thoughts about meeting next week? Um. Even though I'm not gonna be here, since we didn't get to this today, I, I kind of would like to. Well, maybe let's do that, let's see if we can do that by email and Google document, um, if we put together kind of some initial ideas of what those. Um, guidelines might be for approvable, our P Ds that would have a, you know. Hopefully a high degree of, of success in being approved at the appropriate scale now. Um, the, uh, what those might be, and we could, we could Google Doc those. Um, as a, a group of, you know, thoughts and recommendations that we can, uh, share with Planning Commission. And council as they move forward with getting this, um, first strategic planning ordinance. Right, and, and a little more fair for, uh, for all property owners, um. In those commercial districts, but not just open up the Wild West again, obviously. Everybody okay with that, Larry?
Are we talking about the, uh, clarifying the plan development process? Or are we really talking about defining the catalyst areas?
No, I think this, this is about, so our ordinance that we have recommended that takes the residential use out. Of commercial districts, doesn't provide an opportunity. For anyone who owns less than two acres to even consider any type of residential. Even if they were gonna build a two-floor building with, you know, a restaurant or an office on the ground floor, they couldn't put, you know, like a. Two units of condos on top. They, that's, that's impossible now, and, and that, you know, probably isn't completely fair. That someone, if someone has over two acres, that they could put, you know, um, you know. A number of condos through the plan development process above, so it's just about leveling the playing field a bit. For our property owners that own less than two acres, but still having a process that they have to go through. Where the city, you know, has a, has a approval, you know, rights on that through plan development. Does that make sense, Larry?
I, I think so, I've got to think this through a little bit more, because, because I, I am concerned that we're not. Redefining the plan development process in its entirety.
We're, we're not, but, and again, it would just be guidance that says, these are the type, if you, if you bring something forward. These are the types of, you know, and it's within this guidance, then your, you know, ability to have it approved. It's more likely to be approved, now that doesn't mean that someone couldn't come with a, like in the plan development process, some really creative idea. That the planning commission and city, you know, says, hey, yeah, that, that's, that's fine, but I think we, we provide some guidance. In this interim period where we're trying to get these other things in place.
Okay.
Again, so there's, there's a little clarity, um, Fran had his hand up, but put it down, Shannon?
Just wanted to say, we are about ten minutes over, everyone, um, so if you guys are okay, I will, uh, wrap this up via some Google Docs. And send out some emails later this week, and we can start moving forward on some of this, if you have anything else you want me to work on or, um. Perspectives you want to add that you want to see included in all of this, please get in touch with me and let me know.
Okay, and, uh, thank you, everyone, Shannon, can you stay on for just a second? And otherwise, everyone have a good rest of your day and good rest of your week.
Bye you. Bye bye.